I want to make sure I say good afternoon. Welcome to the special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Truth to Consequences. It is now three o'clock on December 19th. Madam Clerk, can we please have a little call?
Honorable Steve Green?
Here.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Here.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question.
Thank you very much. We have one bit of business that doesn't appear on the agenda, but it is always, as far as I'm concerned, the nicest bit of business to do, and that's a presentation. And we've been requested by the Border Patrol to make a presentation, so I'm going to turn the floor over to you gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a letter from our chief that's down in El Paso, and it is dated November 13th, 2018, and it's to Erica Baker, Lieutenant, Truth to Consequences Police Department, Truth to Consequences is New Mexico, and it says, "Lieutenant Baker, I am pleased to present the enclosed United States Border Patrol Certificate of Appreciation, recognizing your efforts supporting Truth to Consequences Border Patrol Station during Red Ribbon Week. Your efforts with presenting information," I'm sorry, "presenting important drug awareness and prevention measures to Sierra County public school students directly contributed to the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Thank you for your professionalism, supporting United States Border Patrol community events, and being an ambassador in the community. Honor first," and it's signed by Aaron A. Hall, Chief Patrol Agent, El Paso Sector, United States Border Patrol. And actual certificate is United States Border Patrol Certificate of Appreciation, Red Ribbon Week, Lieutenant Erica Baker, Truth to Consequences Police Department, in recognition of your outstanding support to the El Paso Sector and the United States Border Patrol. Aaron A. Hall, Chief Patrol Agent, El Paso Sector, United States Border Patrol.
Lieutenant, you continue right to your seat. Look good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. It's one of my favorite parts of being part of this community, and the police department is being able to, you know, speak to our youth. We also have our, I just wanted to mention to you real quick, our Shop at the Cup program went fantastic this year. We served a little over 50 children at $100 each and made their Christmases better for them. So, thank you to Jamie Amati real quick for all their help as well.
Okay, now we get into the business at hand. New unfinished business. Number one, discussion action, appointment of Tracy Burnett as the temporary designated zoning official. Interim city manager, Ms. Canton.
And Mr. Mayor, I just happen to know that was on the agenda, but I think it would be important for the commission to just give a consensual affirmation to approving the agenda.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the agenda as noted.
I have a motion by Mayor Proton Whitehead, a second by?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Clark, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you, Attorney Rubin, good catch.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Sure, absolutely. And we're going to go off a little bit of the form here, but let me pledge allegiance to Commissioner Heschler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I think with keeping proper protocol, I would not be remiss in asking all of you to join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you very much. Okay, number one, discussion action, appointment of Tracy Burnett as the temporary designated zoning official. Ms. Canton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. According to Section 1121 of the code, related to an administrative official, it says the City Commission is required to designate a zoning official who can carry out the duties as directed in the code. And right now, with the vacancy with the planning and zoning coordinator, Tracy Burnett has graciously been filling in to provide those services to the citizens, and so those duties are continued with and taken care of, and so in line with the code ordinances in the way it says, temporarily, of course, until we have a new position. We're asking that you would consider appointing her as the temporary designated zoning official.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, concerns?
So, we actually don't have a choice in this matter. Is that what you read?
Otherwise, we'll have to turn everybody with the permit away if we don't have a designated zoning official.
That's unacceptable.
Yeah.
We're not going to turn anyone away.
We need to see some weather. I was trying to be working with Tracy, and she seems to have a bit of a regular procedure because I'm involved, so I'm in support of this action.
So, this would be in addition to the jobs and roles and responsibilities that Tracy has already assumed.
Yes.
That said, I would like to just throw out for discussion that with this additional volunteering of responsibility, I think that that should be recognized financially until we are able to hire someone on a full-time basis. If we're asking someone to do above and beyond their job description, then I think that we should show our appreciation in that way. That's just my thoughts.
Commissioner, before you discuss it too much, we do have, right now, we've kind of put a hold on any interim pay and any pay increases. The decision, the Commissioners, was until the new city manager comes in.
Okay.
I think that, to be fair to all of those who may have asked either, you know, we don't want to extend the budget too far, and give the new city manager that choice to keep that in mind as well. With that being said, I don't disagree that any of them that have requested anything deserve it, you know, so we just want to make sure that we're fair all the way around.
Absolutely. Any other concerns, statements, then I will stand for motion for approval of the temporary appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the appointment of the temporary position of Tracy Burnett as the temporary designated zoning official, as noted by Renee Canton, our interim city manager.
I have a motion by Mayor Proton Whitehead, a second by? I will second that. Any further discussion?
Mayor, can I talk to Tracy for a minute? Can you bring Tracy up?
Tracy Burnett, could you please come to the microphone? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi. You know, we put a freeze on everything until the new city manager starts.
Correct.
And I just want to say thank you to you, because you did step up to the plate, and you did take that on, and it was very important to us. And I think that you oftentimes go over the requested amount of work voluntarily, and sometimes I don't think you get said thank you to enough.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I understand you're okay with this appointment?
Yes, I work for the city. I work for, you know?
I understand, and there was a hesitation in the second, because we didn't hear from you, and thank you, Commissioner Clark, for bringing it up, because it was important to us to know that you also would be interested in that position.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Tracy. Number two, discussion action, approve the proposed golf course plan. Commissioner Heschler.
So, I have another updated plan, number 14. I have to pass these out to you, so I'll explain to you, Heschler, what my latest proposal is going to be. So, I've been in negotiations and discussions with Mr. Taylor at the golf course extensively. I've met with him three or four times at least. I talked with him last night again. He wasn't able to be here today because he's having surgery today. He has a melanoma that needs to be removed from his face, so certainly I understand why he's not here, but he's in total concurrence with this proposal. We would like to consider terminating Mr. Taylor's contract, track effective January 1st under mutual agreement. After January 1st, we propose to hire as seasonal Mr. Bart River, who is currently employed by Mr. Taylor and resides in the residence located at the golf course on the ground. We also, and to offer him an appropriate salary for that position, with no additional benefits as a seasonal, that's what he would get, basically, just the salary itself, and he would be the golf course supervisor. And of course, we would also offer him a line to stay in that residence, as he is now, free of charge to the city. Mr. River would be responsible for functions of the course, including the pro shop, cart rentals, collection fees, and care and maintenance responsibilities. In addition, we recommend that the city also hire as a seasonal laborer Jimmy, and I'm sorry, I didn't get Jimmy's last name, again, for a set amount as a seasonal for a period of time up to six months, it could be shorter than that. This position would be responsible for the care and maintenance of the course, greens, equipment, and carts. These duties take very specialized skills that are not easily available, and the city does not possess the knowledge to provide these skills at this time. Total cost to the city for the two employees is approximately $5,500 a month. The savings are $4,500, which is currently what we're paying for the contract, $120,000 a year, $10,000 a month. The remainder of the $120,000 contract, or unagreed upon amount or percentage of that the commission agrees to, should be transferred to the Parks Department for the care and continued maintenance of the course. This would be until the end of the fiscal year, as my recommendation. The Parks and Recreation Manager can then use the additional budget and the personnel he has to support and help to maintain the golf course. Any revenue generated by the golf course, under this new agreement, shall be remitted to the city. And then, as this process is going on, I recommend that we should, this arrangement should be on a month-to-month basis, while the city prepares an RFP to find full-time management of the golf course by the contractor. With that, that's my presentation. I'd like to ask you further discussion. Turn it, please.
So, Commissioner Heschler, on transferring some of the monies to the Parks Department, would that be to hire additional personnel, or could the Parks Department do their job that they're doing now, plus lend a helping hand to the golf course?
Exactly. The additional personnel is the Parks Department. The two people that we consider hiring as seasonals will stay there to maintain the course. They have the knowledge to maintain the course, I'm confident in their abilities. And then, the Parks Department would assist in the support of the golf course with the extra revenue. We need to have the turf aerated, for instance, or fertilized, or we need to buy equipment. The Parks will have the ability to do that with the transfer of those funds. Additionally, if there's major projects that need to be completed at the golf course, the Parks Department, on a time-to-time basis, would be able to provide their staff and their crew to wolf pack a particular project, so that we can really knock out some heavy maintenance issues that have been plaguing the golf course for a while, which they can identify themselves to take care of. So, that's kind of how I see this thing going forward.
Was this presented to the advisory board, the golf course advisory board?
It was, and 90% of this forum, but since then, some things have changed. I did talk with the advisory board, they are supportive of this plan. The only thing that's changed was that I had originally considered bringing on the staff as contractors, the golf course staff, but we found another method to do this more simply, and still offering the same salary, and that is in the form of hiring them as seasonal employees without benefits, which would continue to give them their salary, and it would be uninterrupted service at the golf course.
First of all, thank you for your effort and energy and time to get us to this particular point. It's been a long time coming, and thank you for that. Any other concerns or questions? Commissioner Clark.
Mr. Ma-
What's our next question?
Go ahead, Mayor. Commissioner Heschler, I just have one question. Will these people that we will put working at the golf course, will they be offered any type of training as far as maintenance, on taking care of the grass and the equipment and stuff like that, or are you confident that they're already capable of doing that?
These two people are actually Mr. Taylor's employees. They've been managing the golf course now for, Jimmy's been there for several, for a couple of years, I think, and Bart's been there for over six months, I know, or longer. So, they are already well versed in the operation of the golf course. I've talked to both individuals, they are competent, and they have the knowledge right now to maintain that golf course, and perhaps even improve it, just some other things that would take place. For instance, the other things are, we have got to get the sulfur and erosion system in place there to tackle the water system, and also to add, get that fresh water pond reactivated. If we get those things done, I'm confident that we would get an RFP from, we could go out for RFP, we would get a contractor that would be much more willing to maintain that facility, not having to tackle those two problems.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
Well, that's exactly it. That's my big gig, is that, you know, you can't put an RFP out to people when you have a facility that doesn't work.
Right.
And the issue with the water, I think, is extraordinarily important, and we've been fighting that one for many years now, and keep coming up with new ideas and new ideas, and I think that you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Heschler. Unless we have that operating, it really doesn't make a lot of sense to try to put it out. And these two gentlemen, I did meet one of them today, and these two gentlemen are willing to do this on that kind of seasonal hire. I suspect Mayor Canton, I mean, Manager Canton, did you talk to them too about this?
Just very briefly.
Just briefly, okay. I just don't think we have a better option than this particular thing right here.
Someone might sell lemon to a car, but you know who's going to buy it. So, I do have a question, Commissioner Heschler. If they're seasonal, I see that Mr. River's going to be living in the house that's on the property.
Yes, sir.
Seasonal is how, what do you envision seasonal being, time span, what period of time?
We can hire a seasonal employee up to nine months. I'm hoping what this will do for us is to buy us some time so that we can get a strong contract in place to go out for an RFP. And so, if the process takes a month, a month, or if it takes four months, you know, at least we can maintain this golf course, and maybe even improve the facility with the extra little bit of budget that we have by not having a contract in place now, so that we can get a strong contender to bid on that contract.
Okay. Any further questions, concerns? If not, again, Mr. Heschler, thank you. I will not be here in January to thank you again, but I thank you for January now, and for all the work that you have done to get us to this particular point. It is a Herculean task, and greatly appreciated. I will stand for a motion for approval of the proposed golf course contract that has been presented to us, the last rendition of it by Commissioner Heschler.
So.
I have a motion by Commissioner Clark, a second by?
A second.
A tie goes to the woman, Mayor Proton.
Commissioner, can we possibly, just for the minute, spell out that that includes two new employee positions that warrants it, rather than just approving a plan?
Okay. Commissioner Clark, would you feel?
I'm totally fine with that. This is, total cost to the city for the two employees is written down on this contract.
Right.
So, it does say two employees on the second to the last paragraph.
Okay.
Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Fine, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Now do I yell four? A little golf joke there. Number three, discussion action, publication of ordinance number 701 for elected official salaries. Commissioner Clark.
I brought this up at the last meeting, and we did have action on it, so I asked my fellow commissioners to make this consideration. One of the things that I'm thinking, and I'm happy to have this discussion with all of you, is we actually can pay our commissioners up to what the county commission receives, and whatever move we would make today is not going to affect a single one of us sitting up here. So, this is for future commissioners, this is not for current commissioners. The thought was that we have a joke that we make about $2.45 an hour, and not that that's, we do it because we love our city, I mean, or none of us would be sitting up here. But the other thought is, you know, if we bumped that up a little bit, that there might be some other people in the community that might consider putting their names into the hat when three of us go up for, our positions go up for election in a year. And my thought was to get this done now, instead of right before an election, and just to see how my fellow commissioners feel about doing something like this.
Okay. Thoughts, comments? Let you guys go first.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's probably a good idea. I think it may bring forward other potential candidates, that although, we still wouldn't do it for the money, we're only talking about $1,000 a month, but it may allow people to sacrifice some other things in order to run the commission, because we all do sacrifice to be here, to some degree.
Yes.
Whether it's time away from our home, our families, or other jobs. And so, this would, this could potentially entice some others to run their office, and I'm glad of the fact that we're not buttering their own toast, but we're actually setting the table for the future, and I think that's important.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's been a long time coming, and I thank you for the effort and the energy to put it out, and even though it won't affect any of us now, it will affect some of us maybe in the future, or any future candidates that wish to throw their hat in. So, I think it's a great effort, and a great idea. Thank you.
One more comment for consideration, if I may, and that is that if we rely on the next election to offer this pay to three commissioners, then we'll have a disparity on the board. That means three commissioners will begin receiving the increased pay, and two commissioners will not. The other alternative we could discuss is that sometime in the future, when they would hold, the new commissioners would hold off until we have the last two commissioners re-elected, and then at that time, institute the raise for them, so all five commissioners would have the same rate of pay at the same time. And that's just for discussion.
And that's a good consideration, and we've talked about that, and the people that will be affected will be Mayor Proton and Commissioner Baca. And so, a lot of it just depends on, I think, your input.
And I don't have a problem with what I'm getting now, and I think it's just something to look forward into the future. I wouldn't have an issue with that. I mean, personally, I mean, I've been in these situations before, and I don't have a problem with the money that I make, and the money that I could make, and the money that I will make, so.
Okay. And that's the important point, is just to see how the two of you, how do you feel about that, Commissioner Baca?
I, Commissioner Clark, first of all, thank you. I do have a strong issue on this.
Okay.
I cannot, in my mind, wrap my head around the idea that potentially, three new people who haven't even found out where the bathroom is located, are going to make more money than two, Mayor Proton Whitehead has been serving this community six years now as a commissioner, or mayor, Mayor Proton Whitehead. Mr. Baca, Commissioner Baca will be two years in March in 2020. So, you have two people who have knowledge, who have fought some of the battles, and we have three new people coming in, all be it of good spirit, good heart, and good mind, who are going to be making, well, I don't know, $1,000, so twice as much, and doing not as much, because they don't know who ropes yet. So, I think it's a great idea. I've always talked about, and you could talk about it a million times, all I've asked for life is a level playing field, and I don't see, this is not a professional football team, where the quarterback can make $3 million in a line and make $700,000 a year, because that's what the positions are about. This is, we've always talked about this, this is a team effort. Everyone works as hard as they can, and the expertise in the fields, or interests that they can bring to the table, and make life better for our community and our commission. And I just don't understand, I can't, I can't envision paying a newcomer more, twice as much, or even a dollar more, than someone who has fought the battles for that.
Then there's another thing to bring up, Commissioner Heschler, you did bring this up, and so that's an option, is to do 2022. Manager Canton, is it possible that three new commissioners could be voted in, and for two years, be on the same playing field as the two existing commissioners, and then all five of them would go up to a new rate if we voted it in now? Is that a possibility?
Yes, if he made it effective on the 2022 election.
2022, much effective, much effective.
But could we backdate it to the three that were already on for two years? That's the question I have, because my understanding is that you can't give a commissioner a raise.
Right, but I think, I'm losing the conversation, but we're talking about, if people, if the people coming in 2020, would their raise come in to be effective?
At the same time as everybody else, is that?
There's no any provision against that, I can check that out for you. I hear what you're saying, I understand Mayor Green's comments, it sounds very good that way, and I can take a look at that for you.
Would you do that?
Yes.
Because Commissioner Heschler brought that up, and since I brought it up, I have no problem putting this off again. We don't need to vote, do action on it today. So, if you wouldn't mind Attorney Rubin looking into that for us? Because I would have no problem going 2022.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the only problem that I would see with that would be, if you waited until that next election, and they happened to vote on it, then there might be a problem.
No, I'm thinking next month.
If you do it now.
And in a month or two.
Yeah, if I said we can do it, I would have emergency to your way through the next month or so, yes.
Okay. Are you guys good with putting that off? Then I would like to ask that this be put off again.
Okay. Am I comfortable with that?
Yes.
So, Jay, you're going to check out the legality of having it all start where all five would be at the same year?
It goes to the, do we?
I think that that thousand was thrown out by Commissioner Heschler, and that's the figure I would have thrown out, too.
Okay. That's all.
Well, it'll come back to the publication anyway, it's been in there, but okay, I know my wants and words are for researchers, so I know that.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, very good. So, that would be postponed until sometime in January. Discussion action number four, approve the contract for the new city manager, city commission. Who's going to start?
I have, because I learned it from you.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, after a laborious process, we have made our final selection as for our new city manager, and we've negotiated terms for which him to run board, and I feel pretty confident in his selection. Mr. Morris Madrid, he has a Bachelor of Arts degree in accounting, he has an MBA in general business, he's been a senior accountant at Highlands University, he's also been a finance director and a city manager for the city of Las Vegas. More recently, he's worked for the Department of Finance Authority, and so with all this experience and background, we felt he was a perfect fit for what we were looking for, for the leadership of our city, and we really look forward to bringing him on board. More recently, by the way, he is the public service director for Sound Miguel County. So, every place where this city right now has a void, this gentleman has experience in filling that void either personally- this gentleman has experience in filling that void either personally or professionally. And so we look forward to that, to this new relationship that we're about to embark on. So after we go into executive session, my hopes are that we'll be able to operate in a position and to start as soon as possible.
You want to someone else?
It turns, I only have one statement. I wish I could be here to see Mr. Madrid do the job that we all believe he's capable of doing for our community, and that's my one, among other sad points, that I'm not going to be here. That's certainly one of them. But certainly, if things work out, wishing the best in working with staff and the commission.
Mayor.
Yep.
I got a problem with your comment.
Go ahead.
My problem with your comment is just because you're not going to be the mayor and a commissioner doesn't mean you're not going to be here.
Well, thank you for that, and I'm going to count on you making those phone calls every other day to my own.
To make sure you're okay.
To make sure I haven't bellied up by you. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm a little confused because our action item is to approve the contract for the city manager, yet we have not gone into executive session for this, so.
So I think we need.
Legal opinion.
What's the, are you part of the planning? I guess we're going to a closed session and then.
What's the details of the contract?
The details of the contract, and then we come out and close session. We're going to talk about it at that time.
Because the public office.
I think that's fine. Do you have any agenda, any way you're discussing this? We're going to, for action, when we come out and close session.
Okay, and we're going into executive session for, under city manager anyway, so we're covered.
Correct.
Very good, okay. Anything else to add?
All right, again, I want to thank, in my absence for the last six weeks or two months or wherever it's been, physically, a little bit mentally, I want to thank my fellow commissioners. I want to thank Mayor Protem. She and I don't communicate too often together, but I do hear what you've been doing through Commissioner Clark and through Commissioner Heschler, they've been talking behind your back.
Behind my back.
All good things. And I want to thank Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Heschler for stepping up. I really appreciate it. Commissioner Baca, I just want to thank you for being here, and I wish you well for the next two years.
Next item is number five, discussion action, selection of a process to fill the vacancy for the position number five of city commissioner, Renee Canton interim city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As you can see from the Commission Action Forum that the commission can appoint a qualified elector to serve for the remainder of the term, which will be the next regular election. And I've extensively looked through the local election act to make sure everything was the same or similar. And the only difference actually was that usually if it's less than half a term, you go to a special election, and that's no longer in place. So anytime there's a vacancy in an elected official position, that everybody would just appoint until the next regular election. So the process that we're presenting at this time would be, the thing that we really need to figure out is how long the commission would like to allow for the, to receive letters of interest and declarations of candidacy for the position, those interested in the position. And so if you wanted to do something to the effect of January 25th or, you know, the end of January, or if you wanted to do it before the second meeting in January so that you can start interview process then, it's up to you. I think a clean cut might be the end of January to give plenty of time for notification and publication. We also have three weeks in between that and the February 13th meeting. So basically, the easiest way to do it and keep track and make sure we have qualified electors is for us to revise the declaration of candidacy that you all are required to submit for your regular filing, and then a letter of interest for them to show basically, you know, whether you would be interested. What we had, I had done in the past was a couple of different things. We could, once we received those declarations of candidacy, we could just schedule them for, if you want a special meeting, it might be better. So it's a little separate, and schedule them, give them each, whatever time you want. If you want to give them five minutes each to present themselves, and then you can have your questions and such. And generally, it's all done pretty much in an open meeting.
Well, I'd like to start off the discussion, I may. First of all, I appreciate your research on this. I would like to be part of the process of choosing a replacement to sit in position number five. So what I would like to ask my fellow commissioners, has anyone reached out to anyone who has expressed an interest and that you think in your heart of hearts would do a good job filling in for the 14 months up to March 2020? If no one has a name, I would like to suggest that we appoint George Zagetti as the position number five candidate. He has been co-chair of the Ballotful Alliance Recycling Committee along with me. He is the chair of the Public Utility Advisory Board. He knows how government works. He doesn't suffer fools gladly. He does his research, he's a sharp guy, he's worked for the United States government, he's got the highest clearance that the Department of Defense gives anybody. So he has dealt with sticky wickets, shall we say, of executive session, so we know we can keep a secret. And I think he would do a wonderful, wonderful job. I did speak to George, and one of my concerns, among many reasons why I am stepping down, is that if we have three new city commissioners, it puts an undue burden on Mayor Protem Whitehead and whatever her position will be in January, and Commissioner Baca. And I felt that now would be the time to let someone hit the ground running who's been quasi speaking in front of us for all these years, he's not afraid to speak, well fought out guy, that he could bring something to the table and that he would run again in 2020. So you would have a continuity of knowledge and expertise as you unfold. So I looked in the rules of procedure, I checked with Attorney Rubin to make sure that what I was asking for was 100% legal, so the city didn't get itself into trouble. And it appears, Jay, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we do have the authority, the commission has the authority to appoint someone to sit in a vacated seat if the person has served more than half a term. And that is a process that has been accepted before.
Let me just maybe pass the legality just for a moment here. The state statute, and I know Renee, you kind of alluded to this a little bit, but the state statute, we're talking about 3-14-9 entitled vacancies in the commission. And where it reads in Public Utilities as follows. If a vacancy occurs in the commission, the remaining elected and appointed commissioners shall, by a majority vote, appoint a qualified elector to fill the vacancy until the next regular municipal election, or any special election call in accordance with subsection B of the section at which time a qualified elector shall be elected to fill during the unified expired term. And then, so the question's on my mind is, is it appropriate, since the vacancy actually doesn't relate currently until January 1st when Mayor Green's going to step down, is it appropriate to be, you know, talking about it at this stage? So I called the municipal league to get some verification, because I never had that question come up before. And I spoke with Randy Van Leek. Randy Van Leek is the main staff attorney at the municipal league. And his position is that we could go forward, say, if you wish to do this. And so for the commission, it's really, if it's, the statute is basically more than word enough, it's really, you know, it's really how you wish to, how you should proceed. But he feels that yes, that since it's on the agenda, the commission's approved the agenda, if you do wish to discuss it and take action today, you can. Or if you need to defer, it gets up to the commission. And there's no guidelines to really how the appointment is to occur. You can make just a simple motion, or you can go through a longer process, it's all the commission.
So if it would be the will of the commission, you could, someone could make the motion, and that would become effective January 1st, otherwise you'd have six commissioners.
Correct, right, yes, yes. And yeah, so the will of the commission, how you wish to proceed.
Hi, here. I have a couple of comments. I talked to several people and people who have had experience in the city, and I think it's very important that, that there's not such a high learning curve coming in, somebody who knows this, few of the issues that are going around. And I, too, spoke to the municipal league, and I spoke to Attorney Rubin. And I think it's very important, because I had a conversation with Mayor Protem, and I would like her, if you wouldn't mind, to say what you said to me, what your concerns are.
Commissioner Clark, can I ask, since you did, being the spokesman commissioner to Mr. Van Leek, did he confirm you?
He did. He said exactly what you said, so you two are on the same page. And he actually, his recommendation was that we fill that so that we don't have an empty space, so that we're not doing four, where we could end up with a two and two for a while. And he also said that it's our decision how we want to handle it. But Mayor Protem expressed her concern to me, and I think it's very important that we all hear it.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Clark. My only concern, it wasn't anything regarding Mr. Zagetti. It was just the fact that, and no disrespect to Mayor Green, that he has stepped down and now he's appointing his replacement. And how does the city, how does the public perceive that? You know, should we, four commissioners, excluding Mayor Green, be voting for our new replacement for Mayor Green's position? Or should Mayor Green be allowed to vote for his replacement? You know, I've been in, not city politics, but I've been in county government for a very long time, and that, you know, was always perceived that if you sat on one seat or one department and you decided that, oh, I don't want to sit on that department, I want to sit somewhere else, you couldn't resign your position to run for that next office without your term limits. And so I'm just looking at how does the community see this happening? And are we being transparent? Or are we just being forced to accept someone? I'm very confident that Mr. Zagetti, if he is the one that we accept and appoint, I'm sure he will do an outstanding job. But in all fairness, what does the community see? What does the community want? That's all I have to say.
Jay, just a question, legally, am I allowed to vote if the commission decides to vote today?
No, that's a, yes, I mean, I hope not, but the answer is, that's, well, that's the whole purpose, well, not the whole purpose, but that was really the, one of my reasons for calling Mr. Van Leek to get the, to get the, if it's only a chance today, which it is, and the commission wishes to proceed, yes.
So Mayor Protem, I understand what you're saying. The citizens voted for us. And we didn't get none of us, got every single vote. Never going to happen in the history of the world, probably. So they allow, they're counting on us to use good judgment, good faith, and moving forward. And to me, I have no problem voting for someone who I think would do a really good job and be an asset to the commission for the next 14 months, whatever, I guess it's 14 months. I would like to be part of that process, but that's up to you guys, it's not up to me. I don't think that we have to waste time, once again, going out, doing the, you know, George Zagetti has been interviewed already, that's how he became a member of the Public Utility Advisory Board, and then he was chosen by that board to be chairman. I guess Al Siffrin was on it before. I think that, I think we don't want to lose the motion of moving forward with a new, with a new city manager. I think you want five seats, you don't want, I've served on, you've served on commissioners where you deadlocked two to two, you don't want that. I would like, after 10 years and 10 months of service to the community, every vote that I have taken has not been applauded, I'm quite sure of that. But certainly, I would like to think that the folks who have kept me here for almost three full terms have the faith and confidence in me that I do my homework, I do due diligence, and I do what is best, I think, for this community moving forward. And I think with the new manager coming on board, that you are a fully staffed commission. And I don't think this is the time to start advertising papers and doing all that type of stuff and losing time. Because just remember, if Commissioner Clark doesn't run again, if Commissioner Heschler doesn't run again, and let's say I was not having the issues I was having, but in 20, 20, 82 years old, I would not run again. You and Commissioner Baca would have three people who are totally unappointed with the government of true consequences. And by us moving forward now with someone who on the peripheral is involved right now, that I think that it puts the next look of the commission in a stronger position than it would by just having someone who interviews well and doesn't do the job, is not willing to spend the time. So I understand your position, you want to be open and forthright. You guys have known this for two months or more, and I told you about this. And you've had the time to reach out, to find someone, you knew that my position would have to be replaced. That's one of the reasons why I let you guys know ahead of time. And I've been casting the net out there, and I think I caught a good fish. That's up to you guys to decide.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners?
Yep.
If I might offer another possible suggestion, I don't know where you all are leaning on me. Maybe I should let you talk it out a little first. Like, you know, we do have plenty of time till the end of, end of the year. We were to call one special meeting just for interviews and appointment, to where you still can open it up rightfully to the community. And, you know, we have, we're close on 31st, but we have up to the 28th, next Friday. If we wanted to schedule a special meeting for them and accept letters of interest and declarations of candidacy till, like, next Wednesday, we have a whole week.
Well, I made my decision.
Yeah, that was just my comment, you know, I just needed to voice my opinion and how I felt about it, that I wasn't really comfortable with, with the way this was going. But if the rest of my commissioners feel that this is what they want to do, you know, I support you. I will support it, although I'm not comfortable with it. And that's just, that's just me.
And I think, I think that's really important, Mayor Protem, because it's very evident to me that your concern is the people of this community.
Correct.
And, and whatever we do right now is whatever we do right now. But I feel it was very important that you were able to state your position.
Thank you.
Because I could, I could really go either way. But I do see that the need to get somebody in that fifth seat is not January 31st. We've got a new city manager coming on. Ralph and I spent four hours with him today, introducing him to the city. Fantastic gentleman, and I think he deserves a full house, in all honesty. And, and if we were to put it out there, I don't think that we. And, and if we were to put it out there, I don't think that we would get enough attention to have enough people say, oh, I want to be in that seat. And the fact that we've got somebody who's been the chair of the Public Utility Advisory Board, which is one of our bigger boards, one of our biggest issues, because we are basically the utility company also, that there's just less of a learning curve pulling somebody from one of our boards than it is pulling somebody from the streets. So I'm just letting you know, I'm good either way today making a decision. I did have a conversation with the same person, and I was very comfortable with that knowledge. And, but I don't think that going manager of Canton till the end of January is such a good idea. And because I'm confident, having talked to two different lawyers, that we do have the ability to do that, but I also agree with Mayor Protem that, you know, there's a, what does it look like?
It looks like we're doing the best we can to serve this community.
Yeah.
Simple as that. All those people who ran, where are they? I asked you, has anyone that ran in the last election volunteered for anything for this community?
Good point.
Any board? Where are they? So I go back to my original point, the citizens have the trust and faith in each and every one of us to do what's best for them, not for us. This is not for Steve Green and getting a shadow candidate who's going to, you know, who's going to be a Steve Green up here. That's not what this is about. This is about continuity, moving forward, we're going into a new year with a new manager, and this is the time, I think, that the citizens are asking us to make those tough decisions. Who's going to come out of the woodwork? And does it take my retirement to bring them out? How could they not say, I want to sign up for the P&amp;Z board? You have had a P&amp;Z board for three years. Not one candidate, not one, has raised a finger in two years.
That's a good point.
So.
It's worth noting that two cents. Mine's going down, yours is going up.
If any of you out there thinks that being a city commissioner is easy, I got a loose for you. These decisions are sometimes heart-wrenching, gut-wrenching, they're difficult, but they have to be done, and that's why we are elected here, to be here today, to make those decisions. I want to thank Mayor Protem Whitehead for bringing this forward so that we can think about it, because it's a very valid concern, and I have that concern along with everybody else. And I also have to think about my friend, Mayor Green, sitting next to me, and the respect I have for him, and for him to make a, make recognition like this, and to put himself outward like this means a lot to me, and has a lot of, and so I have to think about that, very difficult situation as well. And so I don't have a problem making that decision today, and I will make that decision today if we have to, but, but understand that, you know, that recognition is very important to me as well, and I'm prepared to act, so thank you.
Mr. Baka. I have to agree with Mrs. Whitehead on, I think we need to put it out there, I think we ought to the public to do that. I mean, I just, I agree with her, and that's what I think.
And would you also like to say anything? Hearing none, I'm going to make the motion, see where it goes. I'm going to make the motion that the commission appoint George Zagetti to fill out the balance of the term that will be vacated at 12:01, January 1, 2019, by Commissioner Steve Green.
And I'm going to second that motion. I know you're probably going to laugh, but again, you know, I voiced my concerns. I feel that Mayor Green has done due diligence by going out and, and bringing forward Mr. Zagetti. If Mr. Zagetti is willing to sit with us on the commission for the remainder of the 14 months, so be it. And that way, we have a full commission, we have a new manager going forward, January 1, and hope that this will bring good and better things to the city of Truth or Consequences.
I'd just like to go, frankly, I just want to go off script and say, Mayor Protem, you never cease to amaze.
I was just going to say exactly the same.
You are, you know, as you were speaking, what was dancing in my padded brain was the word, words, and it's two words, I'm picking as one, class act. Thank you so much, I appreciate your support, and I just appreciate the love that you have for the city and the passion that you have for the commission to be a deliverer of good things to all people. Thank you very much, I can't count you enough for that. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Did you, I didn't hear, did you vote? It carries unanimously, thank you very much. Manager Canton, I would like one thing, when my request would be, and this is just a request, whatever it is, to get Mr. Zagetti sworn in after January 1, as soon as possible, either by Judge Sanders and/or by Judge Brown.
You can do it.
Oh, you can do it. I would like to be notified of when that is going to be, and I'd like to be present for that, that rule of that. And then Mr. Zagetti would be able to pick up his, his information and be able to participate in the January 9 city commission, hit the ground running. So I.
Mr. Mayor, I think he can be sworn in here at the end of the year.
No, no, he can't be sworn in while I'm still, because then you have six city commissioners. He's got to be after January 1.
Doesn't have to be after January 1?
January 1.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because otherwise you have six city commissioners.
Okay. Thank you.
You heard my prepared remarks last meeting. It's been a hell of a run. I appreciate all of your, your support, your loyalty, you're willing to tell me when I'm wrong, myself hopefully willing to admit when I'm wrong and apologize for those mistakes. And I appreciate this send-off, your vote for George Zagetti. I think he will make us all proud and make the community proud, so I thank you for that. All right, the next item is executive session. I will need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session under D1, limited personnel matters, city manager pursuant to 10151 H2.
I have a motion and a second. Mayor Protem, motion, second by Commissioner Heschler. Madam clerk, I have a roll call, please.
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Paul Baka?
Yes.
Steve.
I'm going to drag this man, stay in for the first little bit. You want to do that?
Yeah.
Let me speak if you want to.
Okay.
Jerry?
Yeah. You guys aren't going anywhere for this trip?
No, no, we're going to stay for the first hour, and then when we get down to real business, we'll, we'll stick around for a few minutes.